It is 7:06. I'm gonna call the meeting to order tonight for September 22nd, 2001. Does anybody else have a legal notice, or do you want me to just read it?
...to deal with the problems that Matt's and Chad spending millions of dollars...
If somebody can mute their TV, maybe?
...of recovery services is budgeted for more than eight and a half million dollars next fiscal year.
Yes, Mr. Clarity, if you could use...
I can't tell who it is, because I only see four faces at a time. Everybody mute their... Please, we're picking up a lot of background noise. Thank you. So, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, 1-3-0-1-7-1-5-8-5-9-2, meeting ID 8-4-3-0-1-0-7, 8-4-5-0, passcode 9-5-1-7-7-7. Please only use dial-in or computer, and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, 22-10 Nicole McShane, application for a special permit under Section 190-22A-F1 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow an accessory apartment. The apartment, I'm sorry, the property is shown as map 14B Lot Parcels N10 of the assessors' map and is located at 34 Pay on Boavard. Three, 22-11, 22-12 Sean Brady and Kristen Nikademski, application for a variance under Article 10, Section 190-66, seeking a variance from the requirements of Article 6 in Table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, related to, in addition, to be constructed onto the existing dwelling, application for determination and/or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, related to, in addition, to be constructed onto the existing dwelling. The property is shown as map 34 Lot Parcels A77+ of the assessors' map and is located at 22 Grafton Street. Board of Appeals. So, tonight, we're actually just gonna take a couple of things out of order.
Amy, I think we gotta do a roll call first.
Oh, thank you, yep. Let me see if I can see everybody on this phone. Okay, so I'm just gonna... Joe?
Here.
All right. Mike?
Here.
Thank you. Jim? He's waving his hand. Tom?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Chip?
Here.
And we know Dave is not here. Did I get everybody? And Amy, I'm here tonight as well. Okay. So, first, we're gonna take up 62 Foundry Street LLC. So, Brian, if you are on, if you're ready to go.
Ready to go. Madam Chair, I don't know if you can enable the screen sharing? Think maybe you have to claim host?
I claimed the host. Let me see. Oh, it actually didn't take it. Hold on. Okay. And then, can you now, Brian, or do I have to click something else?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, so now, I think if you go down to your share button, is there like a right arrow on the share button?
Right arrow?
The green share screen button?
Oh, let me see. Yeah, mine just, it's giving me options of what I wanna share, but it's not...
Won't give you, it's not a sub-button on that?
No. Let me see if I click on your name.
Maybe you can make me co-host, so I can bring something up, then I can relinquish it?
Okay.
You know, it's hard on your cellphone.
I know. Okay, make host. Oh, I don't wanna make you the host. I'm gonna share. Oh, assign co-host, okay. Okay, so you should be good. Yep.
That worked.
Good.
Great. So, for the record, Madam Chair, Attorney Brian McGreal here on behalf of 62 Foundry LLC. This is the project that's been before the board quite a while on 6276 Foundry Street, which involves a mixed-use, multifamily dwellings and a restaurant use at the property. As I've mentioned, it's been before the board quite a while. We were going through, we were pretty much done with the board, I believe, about a month and a half ago, and then we had to take a step back, because, as you know, this site is, with a lot of sites on Foundry Street, have environmental contamination issues. And it was pointed out to us by the town engineer in their final review that we needed to make some changes to our stormwater system to adjust for contamination in the area. This site, like other sites that have been developed in that area recently, will involve a significant environmental remediation, which would be a benefit not only to the property, but to the neighborhood and the town. So, that had to be done, and it had to be reviewed by the town engineer and put onto the plan, which we submitted to you this week, and that has all been done. You have received an updated memo from the town engineer that they are satisfied at this point. So, you have that final site plan. That final site plan is dated the 17th of September, has all of the notes and conditions that were required by the Department of Public Works and the Engineering Department, so they don't have to be as part of your decision. They're right in the face of the plan. And we also sent in the final architectural plans, and those were dated going back to July 9th, because those have been done for quite a while. That's when we were basically, I think, done with this project. We also have sent in, a while ago, the O&amp;M plan that you require and an estimated construction schedule. I updated that and sent it in Friday, because I accounted for the two months that were lost, two and a half to three months that were lost because of redoing this with the town engineering and DPW departments. So, where we left off, if I may, I'd like to go through proposed draft conditions on this, Madam Chair.
Yep, go right ahead, Brian. Thank you.
Great. So, these are, these are all fairly standard, and what's happened is, you know, for various projects, whether they're multifamily or other types of projects, these conditions have been trimmed, because it's now been the policy of the board to put these right in the face of the plan, which is great, because then when the contractors are looking at the project and bidding the project, they know everything that they're gonna be required to do, and there's no surprises. So, without further ado, the first condition would be that we have to comply in all respects with the conditions of the decision. The board retains jurisdiction as usual to approve minor amendments to the decision that do not materially alter the terms of this decision. To the board's judgment, the proposed change is material. The new hearing shall be required to amend this decision. Jurisdiction to decide disputes or make any necessary classifications of this decision and conditions contained herein, which cannot be resolved by the zoning enforcement officer, shall be retained by the board. That is one. Do you want to go through every one of these, Madam Chair and board members? Because I know you had a chance to look at them. I'm happy to, but I don't wanna feel like I'm impinging on the board's time in doing this. There are some specific, these are pretty much...
Madam Chair, I'm happy if we just kind of brush through the boilerplate ones that are on all our decisions and look at the ones that are pertinent to this process.
I agree. Yeah. Does anybody else have any issues with doing that?
No.
Nope.
No? Okay. Yeah, so just the ones that would pertain?
Okay, so...
But Brian, like the next one, building permits have to be in. Mockup panel.
That's right.
Highlight it.
Yep. So, basically, the next one is that we have to provide contact information to all the various departments. Project has to be shown on the final site plan, architectural drawings, and final landscaping plan. Have to have building permit plan reviews prior to getting the building permit by a board designated board member. Number five is the mock-up panel requirement, to make sure that the materials match what were presented to the board. Number six is have to comply with all aspects and contents of the O&amp;M plan. If this, number seven, if there's a conflict between the site plan, architectural plan, and landscaping plan and the decision, the plan's rule. Let me see. Okay. Also, number seven deals with that the applicant has to do the infrastructure improvements shown on the site plan. If you may recall, this involves some significant infrastructure improvements for the area and for the town at a very large expense to the owner and developer, that being installation of a new water main on Foundry Street, 12-inch water main for the length of the property, and then also the installation of a new public sidewalk, new granite curbing in front of the project. And one of the final conditions was that there's gonna have to be a total repaving on the Maple Street portion of our property and on the Foundry Street in front of our property, that the DPW wants a total repayment when all the utilities are connected. Number eight deals with the fact this is a little bit unique to our project. There's, the board might recall that a portion of the public sidewalk encroaches on our property, which we don't have an issue with. And this just states that if the town attorney, town council requires an easement or covenant, that we will provide it to give access. Sometimes he does, sometimes he doesn't. This was similar to what was on the 500 Main Street project. You might remember that, where the Santander Bank is going. Let me see. Number nine is the estimated construction schedule, which the board has, reserves a right to change that if things go on.
Brian, escape it. Brian, I just had one question on that one. Do we wanna just take out minor and then leave it? Because, I mean, say it's six months, and we're really gonna say that's minor. I think it benefits you to leave it just as an amendment.
So, let me just get to...
Well, number nine, second line, so as a minor amendment, seemingly, it would just benefit everybody to say as an amendment, and then later, we can, you know, if it's six months, we might not say it's a minor amendment.
I appreciate that, Greg.
Yeah, small point, but...
Yeah, unless changed by the board. So, you would say as an amendment, Greg?
Yeah, and then it just leaves it open whether we wanna do a minor amendment or... Yeah.
Got it. Good?
Yep.
Okay. Number 10 deals with landscaping has to be done, you know, before occupancy, unless there's a weather issue, and then it would be bonded. Number 11 deals with parking for personnel and contractors on the street. There won't be any allowed during construction, which is typical. Number 12 deals with the affordable unit requirement. This pursuant to the bylaw requires 18% of these units to be affordable. There's no request for a variance on that. The applicant will meet that bylaw requirement of 18%. It's a total of 58 residential units. There's 18 one-bedroom units and 42 two-bedroom units. So, the affordables are gonna be seven of the two-bedroom units will be affordable, and three of the one-bedrooms will be affordable. We did that proportionately. So, 18% of the 47, and 18% of the 18, it takes us to three. And then, obviously, the requirements of affordability, which are very standard with your multifamily projects in preference to Wakefield residents, as is allowed by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Number 13 requires a regulatory agreement to make sure that this is enforceable in perpetuity. Excuse me for one second. Apologize for that. And then, number 14 deals with the affordable housing sequencing that, you know, that basically requires a proportionate number of affordable units are built and ready for occupancy, as is the market rate. As you know, this prevents anybody developing a project like this from building out all the field market value units, selling them out, and then they don't do the affordable. So, this keeps everybody in line on the sequencing of the affordable units. Number 15 is typical, that signage is not being approved by the board. You're retaining jurisdiction, just like you did with NRP, and we would have to come back at a later date when they figure out exactly what they wanna do on signage for the restaurant, et cetera. 16, in a memo that was issued to you by the traffic advisory committee, they requested that the applicant offer, and if accepted, provide a $25,000 contribution from the town to be used to its future improvements to the intersection of North Ave and Albion Street. And this is something that the board had talked about also. It was specifically discussed with TAC, and that was a requirement in their memo to your board. I highlighted in red, this was the condition as written on the NRP project, Harvard Mills. And the reason I pointed out is, you know, I wanted to leave, you know, it doesn't matter to the applicant, but TAC said the $25,000 contribution would be for the intersection of North Ave and Albion Street for, you know, future improvements. When NRP was done, it was, you can read the language for yourself, but it was broader. And I wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, for you to discuss and determine how you wanted this allocated, if you wanted it specifically, or if you wanted to give a little bit of leeway that the town could use it for other infrastructure projects in the area, and not just that one intersection. So, I'll let you take a look at that language.
So, here's, the discussion, if I remember, guys and girls and women, was that we wanted it specific to North Ave and Albion, because that was the concern, that five-point intersection. And we wanted it to be used, you know, on that world. I guess my question is, how broad can the intersection of North Ave and Albion Street? If you, if you really go to the technicality of that, is that on the other side of the tracks? You know, what does that mean? I don't want it to be used for something in Greenwood.
And it should, I suppose, the way to limit it would be within so many traffic lights of that intersection, because it's all part of the same flow pattern, basically. So, you get out of Pleasant, and you go up to Maine or something like that, and allow the funds to be moved around within that zone. So, in fact, you're not just changing one intersection, but you might have to manipulate the other intersections of lighting and controls and stuff like that to make the whole thing flow properly.
But it was, but it was on this project side of the tracks. We were talking about where, you know, the 7-Eleven is, where the church comes out, all of that mass was what we were talking about, not on the other side of the street on Albion Street.
So, Chip, is the, I remember talking about this for the island and other sorts of things, but where, there was some discussion also about giving money, basically, for control of the light systems and coordinating that as well.
But I, but I still think, Jim, that's North Ave back, not North Ave to the center of town.
Oh, I totally agree. I just, I just think that North Ave's got its own part, own, you know, coordinated system.
So, I guess North Ave and Albion, you know, Brian, what do you, other guys?
I can tell you, I mean, I'm gonna refresh Mr. McBain's memory, because he was at the traffic advisory committee when they discussed this. And if I may, Jim, you might remember Randy Hudson from the fire department?
Yep.
Remember, he spoke at that meeting, and he wanted this money, because his comment was that, that he believes, and I'm gonna kind of speak broadly, but it, you know, paraphrase what he might have said exactly. It was, his thought was that, that a lot of our equipment can be better timed and tuned up, if you will, if there's funds to do it. So, I think his thought was that this would be used at the lights at North Ave in Albion, where Dunkin' Donuts is, to potentially help with some of the timing issues that might be. Is that what Jim is gonna...
Yeah, no, I agree. It was more digital control as opposed to timer or something like that. I just, I just take it a little bit further down the street, basically down by the lake. Flow pattern coming up from there to here, basically. Should that, should extend itself down there, given the latitude, basically, to fix it at two or three locations, but it still benefits this intersection.
I should ask a basic question, though. Does it, oh, if this is, almost doesn't matter in reality, because, you know, cash is fungible. Are they gonna set up a separate account? Or in reality, would they just say, okay, no, you know, someone challenges it, oh, we did spend the $25,000 here. We didn't use it somewhere else.
I would challenge it.
Yeah, usually...
No, but that's my point. If someone does, will they, that's my question. Will they set up a separate account so you can actually track it? If they don't track it, it doesn't matter.
I believe they will, Greg, because...
They need to track it.
Yeah, they do, because this, when these contributions are made, in town council requires this, it will cite the statute, which is a gift to the town. And that's why we say it has to be accepted, because, you know...
Yeah, goes to each, yep.
Yep. So, it would go into an account.
So, can't we limit it just by limiting the distance from this property? Rather than try to figure out the intersections, come up with a distance from the property that keeps it in this vicinity, but gives the town a little bit of, a little bit of leeway if they're working on...
How much leeway do you wanna give them, Tom?
I don't know what the magic number is, but it seems like distance would be the, to me, the most limiting factor from the site.
So, to Jim's point, do you think they should be able to go all the way up to Prospect and North? If that's what it takes to time the lights right?
Right. If they're, if they're doing the ecosystem of lights in this area, I don't wanna cut them off, but I, you know, it's only $25,000. I don't know how far that's going, and how much these things cost.
Well, you don't, you also don't know how much electronic control they already have in the installation, that doesn't need to be twinked. When we did Shaw's, basically, there was a whole discussion about platooning cars, basically, between Main Street and past Shaw's. So, they're all integrated, basically, so it moved the traffic much better. So, I think of this as sort of that same light. Is there some way of controlling those? And you're absolutely right. Is 25 gonna get you very far in order? You just wanna leave it at that intersection? I don't know.
Well, I mean, just a suggestion. So, it's kind of worded now, when it says to be used towards future improvements. I mean, that doesn't mean, you know, future improvements to that intersection could result from work in other areas, right? So, maybe it could say to be used towards, or used towards, or result in future improvements to that intersection. Because that's, I think, what the goal is, that you want it to result in that it's gonna help the intersection in North Ave. And as you just mentioned, maybe it's something that's done down at the Prospect Street light that would do that.
And does the wording, does your red wording, changing the dollar value from 30 to 25, do that by taking that specific intersection out and calling it the project area?
You could do the project area. That's, yeah, that, that, that would be, that would be more broad.
It's more, that's more broad, but it does narrow it down. I mean, you could say project area no further than 500 feet from the property.
We've already been on record sending, how many times did we send that letter to the town council that specified an area? Why couldn't we just, that, I mean, I know we're laughing, but that's, this is the exact area that we told them to look at or asked them to get a study going on. We could limit it to that area. I mean, any help in that area would affect this intersection. I don't remember the exact wording we used. We might have listed all the intersections. But, I mean, they, we're already on record as wanting help in that area, and this goes to that, so...
Greg, do you think the wording in the red does that?
No, the wording in the red lets them do anything they wanted. It's the last sentence.
Claims project area.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe if you take out the last sentence, because then, you know, still said contributions to be used solely as determined by the, then they could say... Yeah, I don't know.
I think project area is reasonable.
But Mike, doesn't it seem contradictory to you to say in the project area, but funds can be used solely as determined by the Wakefield town?
I'm with you on that. I mean, that's, I don't like that line.
Yeah, I think the intent on that is that used, you know, is determined by them in the project area, like whether it's gonna be for lights or striping, or I don't think it says they can use it for a park down the street.
No, I think it should be determined by the DPW.
I don't care who it's determined by, but I think we say in the project area again. And I think it has to be determined by the town council, right? Can't DPW?
So, how about if you said used towards future traffic improvements in the project area? And I'm just playing with it. Yeah.
Better.
Yeah.
I think I can live, I can live with that.
I think you should include that second to last sentence, too, though. If accepted, shall be made prior to the final C of that.
Yeah, I think this needs to go in there, Greg, because it... Maybe it's better to...
In the project area.
Mike, you think they should not to be...
You're looking for like a catch-all?
No, I'm just trying to, kind of place it. I'm trying to wordsmith it, just to make it.
Tom?
Okay. I think that might do it.
How would you read?
Yeah. I don't think you can get more specific than that. I mean, I think it's fine.
And then, if there was any clarifications, would you come back to us anyways? Is there, almost like a certify a question to us type of thing?
I guess the other question I have, and this is not by any means needs to be added, or is there a way we can find out what the funds were used for? Does that need to go here or not? I don't think it goes in a, in a, I think I'm speaking outside of, because I believe we've done this before, and funds haven't been used.
Yeah, yeah. Down in Greenwood.
Right. Jim and I believe that. And also, right on Main Street across from the high school was that project. I don't think they've been used yet for the islands and stuff.
You're right.
I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be lost. And I'd like to get somebody to tell us what they've been, so if they're accepted, how do we do that, Brian?
I think, I think that's, that's a town issue. I mean, you know...
An internal issue, right?
Because these conditions...
Not a project issue.
Yeah. I mean, well, these conditions only apply to the applicant. We don't have any...
Right, right.
We want to be a communication between your board and...
I guess, I guess we could send a note to Steve or somebody to say, okay, guys, we're getting you this money. You've gotta tell us what it's been used for.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll deal with that somewhere else.
Okay, and then, the other one I added on is, because I didn't put it on what I had sent to you, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I didn't want it to get missed. I didn't know if you wanted to consider delivery hour limitations here, like you had on NRP. I mean, this is further down Foundry, but I just wanted, I didn't want to neglect to raise that to the board's attention, because you would ask me to provide, you know, kind of what some of the standard conditions are for your consideration.
I think it's worth it. I mean, most of the West Side kids that walk in back and forth to the Galvin are either coming over those tracks or going over the Broadway intersection, depending on what part of the town, what part of the West Side they live in. I think it's, if it doesn't, you know, I think it's worthy.
Could you move the hours, though? Like, a seven o'clock seems kind of early with school, and two...
Could you move the hours, though? Like, the seven o'clock seems kind of early with school, and two o'clock also is like the Catholic school across the street there.
Well, this says you can't deliver between these hours.
Okay.
So I, I was going to ask to clarify it, too. It seems.
Yeah, it's not well written, Greg. So I mean, we definitely need to change this a little bit, so.
No delivery shall be allowed between the hours.
Yeah. I was going to say, I read it as that's when they can deliver.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
No delivery shall be performed.
Yeah.
What if you just changed the word pro to limit to prohibit? Advocate African shall prohibit. Well, I think, I think it's better to, you know, it's because we prohibit and people do it, we can say we prohibit it. I think it would be better to just say, basically, there shall be. Yeah. No construction deliveries between the, right?
Yeah.
That was the train, by the way.
I heard. I heard in my house, too. And that's, that's what I had.
So let me, let me just play devil's advocate for a second here, guys. There shall be no construction deliveries. A truck comes down and sits on the road, but they're not delivering. They're just there waiting to be unloaded.
Yeah, that happens.
Okay. They show up at four in the morning because they've driven all night. I, I guess the question is who's monitoring it? Who, I, I think it's just fine to leave it. But there are, when we just say no deliveries, define a delivery.
The way you've normally looked at that is if, if the truck's off the road, you know, they can, they can be working and, and unloading the truck. It's, the deliveries are, you don't want trucks pulling down and, and, and.
Right. You don't want a spider running around on the road, taking stuff off a truck on the road.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Mike, gonna say, you've had a similar condition in every one of these projects in this area. It's never been an issue.
No. I don't know if it's ever been adhered to. Well, I know, I know, no, I, I shouldn't say that. I know it was on, uh, the condos.
Yeah.
Uh, down at the four-way intersection. On Lawton's project.
Yeah.
They were very good about it.
I think this really, I think this really gives the board some teeth. If it becomes a problem, it's a condition that you can bring somebody back and say, you know.
Stop it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, real quick, they don't plan on shutting the street down like the NRP did.
No, not, not, no, I mean, there might be certain, not to the extent that they did. I'm sure there's going to be certain periods. They're going to be putting a new water main in.
Yeah, but like, that'll be like a three-hour holiday kind of thing.
And probably, you know, certain staging, because this property is pretty close to the street. But, you know, NRP was a little bit of a different animal.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know if we wanted to put that in, because we didn't put it for NRP, and then they ended up taking the whole street for a whole.
It, it wasn't an issue when 69 was built across the street. This is a pretty similar project.
Yeah, correct. It, it's tough to put that condition in when the applicant doesn't always have the final say. It can be police and others in the town that are dictating the street closure. So I get it, Joe. I thought it stunk with NPR to the extent that it did, but hard to put something on them that they can't totally control.
No, I hear, I hear you for like two or three days with the, you know, can we limit it to like, you can't do it for more than a week or two weeks enough?
But that was, that was the police department doing it for the other project, because they said, and the old building inspector, because he said, that's going to be unsafe. You have to shut the street. So I, I, I don't think we should tie their hands if they think they have an unsafe situation.
Yeah, if we're really concerned, we could put a notice requirement in, but, I mean, again, it's not up to us, so.
Yeah, right. I think that's outside of our purview.
Anything else, board members?
Amy, I would just say that at this point, these are the conditions that would, if we move forward with this, these are the conditions that will be put on with the motions and the variances, et cetera.
Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian? You, you started by saying originally, basically, that some things have been shifted to drawings. Do you remember what the list is?
I do.
Just go quickly down it.
Yeah. I'm maybe a little. So a lot of, some of them are in general notes. Certificate of occupancy, CAD, PDF, those are the plans that they want. Number 11 here is a stormwater prevention plan that they want, that the DPW wants. Those would normally be requirements. And then number 12 here deals with the constructed project includes the installation of underground electric, telecommunications conduit, water mains, sewer, gas. This will result in excavations in Foundry Street and Maple Street will cause series of roadway patches rather than a cohesive service. Thus, to mitigate this, the applicant shall do full-depth reclamation and repave the section of Maple Street along the frontage of the project in the section of foundries from Maple Street to the limit of the far end of the frontage of 69 Foundry Street on the other side of Foundry Street. So paving all in front. And then, let me see, I thought there were. Yeah, that was mainly it. Let me just see. Yeah, and then there's a few other notes. Where they wanted that restated on the paving. There was test hall information that they wanted, they wanted to have double checked, so that was put in there. Environmental monitor, the board might remember that, that they, you know, they, right? Prior to a certificate of occupancy, as-built drawings, requirements. So those were, those were requirements that would normally be in your decision, Mr. McBendt, and now kind of put over to the plans.
Yeah, so the contractor knows what they've got to do.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, as you know, like, the, you know, the, and then, and then the, the water main. Uh, where is it? Hang on. You can see the water main, replace existing water main that's now on the plan. All the details. Because there were problems before, like reclamation, you know, sometimes if that was a decision, that, that would be a problem with the contractor, that contractors don't necessarily read conditions in the, in the writ decision. They look at plans, right? So now they're all, you know, all those kind of substantive monetarial aspects of work are on the plan versus in the decision. Like, this is the detail of all the, you know, how things are going to be abandoned, old infrastructure. And, and Mark Slager, our site civil, spent a lot of time with the town engineering department going over this.
I think what we, what we're left with is the conditions, basically, that are unwritten, basically, are more directed towards the developer, whereby the other conditions, basically, are now in the drawings for the contractor.
Yeah. Yeah. And this deals with, as you can see, the five-foot wide sidewalk. Remove boldos and install vertical granite curbing. Handicap detail, all this stuff is now on the plans.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, very quick question about that. You don't need to bring up the plans again. It's about the developer repaving. But as I say this, I guess it's more of a DPW issue, but was there any discussion about more of a contribution? I mean, is there going to be multiple repavings? Like, I'm sure they're tearing up the street with all the vehicles that are on and in front of Harvard Mills, and are they going to have to repave it? So it'll end up being patchwork down the street anyways?
No, that's, that's going to be Harvard Mills is going to, there's going to be repaving on that end, Greg.
Yeah, no, so that's my point, is DPW never mentioned anything about a financial contribution instead of repaving, so we can actually have it nice afterwards and not different sections being repaved as we go down the street?
Oh, they get, they'll coordinate it. Yeah, like, they, they, they will coordinate that. They're not going to, they always do that. So they're not going to like, say, oh, yeah, you guys do this just to finish up, and then we're going to, you know. They, they will coordinate that. They're always, Bill Verneau is very good about that.
So, yeah, okay.
So I mean, he's going to, he, he, like with Harvard Mills, when that, they, he'll want that all done at the same time.
Okay. So you'll be able to get your certificate of occupancy, or they actually, really, they will if they don't have.
Well, I think we have to come back to the board, like we did with 69, but I think there's avenues to do that.
Okay, okay, that's fine, yeah.
Because I know what you're saying. You don't want them just to rush and do it, and then it gets torn up by the next project. Yep.
Brian, I don't have my operational dialogue right in front of me, but remind me, we've run into the problem about how parking spaces are allocated on different projects. How do we have something in the operations manual for how they're designated and allowing parking under the building to, to be handled?
No, no, nothing specific.
Remember, we had a project that started selling spots.
Yeah. Yeah, you didn't have.
Thus, everybody was parking outside.
Well, that was a 40B project up on the other side of town.
It was, right.
Yeah, which didn't have enough parking to begin.
Right, but, but, but my concern is that they start selling spots or they I don't. That, that somehow they're limiting. I'm okay. All right. I just.
No, I think you're, you're, you're right on the thought, basically. We need, we need to make sure that they.
I thought it went into the, oh, I'm, I thought it went into the operations manual. How's they're going to operate?
Well, we, we discussed on, on those, other, other projects, basically, as Brian says, on the other side of town. And particularly the newer one on the hill over there was that everybody got a spot, and you weren't charging for those spots, basically, because then people start parking on the street because they don't want to pay for the spot. So it should be part of the unit, basically, in the unit fees, period.
What you're saying, Jim, is that, you know, I mean, because, you know, sometimes it's awkward without one and a half space per unit.
Correct.
They're saying is that every unit shall, at, at least, every unit shall at least have one parking space allocated to it.
And, and not for a fee.
Or, yeah, at the very least, it doesn't have to be allocated, but you can't charge for like a parking pass. So it doesn't have to say like unit A on each spot or whatever, but you can't charge extra to get a parking pass to park in the, anywhere in the lot.
We have 58 units, so I think it would be that 58 units will each have a parking space by rights. I mean, if they want it, if they want to, if somebody wants to buy another space, I mean, that's pretty common in, in, in multifamily projects, no matter where they're built.
Well, the point is by right, it's part of your rent. It's part of your, it's part of living there. You get a, you've got a parking spot plus a unit.
Because the, the discussion that we had was, you know, you have parking requirements, but if nobody wants to pay for the unit and the spot fits, sits there empty, then you're not meeting, you, you've kind of like barricaded off that spot. It shouldn't go towards your count. Right? So they have to be free and accessible. In my opinion.
Yeah, I think the, the, when we got into this before, and I think, I don't think Brian was on it, because I think it was Tarrant Lane.
It was.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
Because we had the problem with the project next to Tarrant Lane.
And essentially, Brian came down to the definition of provide, if I remember right. It says provide in the bylaw. And I think it came up because they said, oh, we're going to charge for parking. You know, we think provide, you can get it if you want it. We took the other position. You're not providing if it's an extra fee. I mean, is it, I guess, to even ask, is there any even thought of charging for extra parking in this? Or, or no, I guess, other way around, charging for your initial spot, really, I guess.
No. No, I mean, Brian will answer your one. I mean, every, every unit is part of the purchase is going to get one parking space for sure with no extra charge. Brian, that's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
So wouldn't we?
And then how are you going to do the other spaces?
Well, some people, you know, some, you know, you, some of you have two bedroom units. They're going to want two, two, they're going to want two spaces, some of them. So you would charge them for that chip if they want it.
Brian, what about the commercial spaces down, for the commercial space? Did we discuss that? I can't remember.
Yeah, I mean, that's just open. There's not a lot of commercial spaces on this.
But someone uses like, will, will the resident parking be labeled so no one goes in there and just takes up someone's spot? Because if someone goes in there and says, oh, free parking, and then next thing you know, 30 people parking.
From, I, I don't understand that, and you can embellish that a little bit.
Well, people just, I mean, there's commercial space down below, right? Like, if, if.
The board wants a restaurant, so it's going to be a 3,000 square foot restaurant.
Yeah, so the restaurant, people are going to visit the restaurant. They're not going to be, they'll, they'll be knowing that they're not going to be able to park in the residence spots, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're going to have to allocate that and show it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Gus?
I mean, we know, I mean, we're, we're happy to say, you know, each unit, you know, by right gets one parking space that, you know, we're happy to put a condition on that. That's, that's not an issue.
I would, for record.
I would have it, you know, I would have it put into the operations manual. That's how you're operating the parking.
Okay. We can make that change. I can work that out. Mr. McBendt always reviews the final decisions.
Right, right. But just highlight it in the operations manual.
Yeah, so it's basically, you know, minimum of one, minimum of one parking space per unit for no, no charge, you know, included as part of the sale of the unit. So we're not going to sell units with no parking spaces. Like, hey, you want to buy a unit 101, no parking. If you want a parking space, it's going to be 20 grand.
Correct.
The purchase price of the unit includes a parking space for every unit. Minimum of one. Okay.
And if I was buying, I'd negotiate for my second space.
Brian, do you have anything else for tonight?
No.
No, board members? We're all good. Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody has a question or comment about what they heard tonight, I'll ask you to raise your electronic hand or wave at the screen, and I will try to find you. And if you do speak, I just need you to say your name and address before you speak for the record. So if anybody has anything, please raise your hand. And I see Bronwyn. Go ahead. Oh, you're muted. I don't know if you can. If I have to unmute you, or if you want to mute yourself. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bronwyn Delavolpe, 8 Cyrus Street. Yeah, it's hard to digest all of these conditions in, in detail. Are these available to the public for review? Right now?
I believe that they, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, they were submitted to the building department last week.
Yeah.
Okay, so are they accessible online now?
They were just up on the screen.
Okay, but they're gone now. So are they accessible to be sent? Okay, but they're gone now. So are they accessible to be sent electronically to anyone who would like to read them?
I can email to anyone who wants to be, you know, email. I have them right here. Happy to do it. What's your email address?
I'm not gonna give it here, but um so the building department has them.
I can, yes, except the updates, but from tonight I have.
You'll have in the morning, Gail.
Okay.
Okay, Gail, you have my email address. Could you send them over to me, please, at your convenience?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And do we have anybody else raising their hand? Let me see. I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, we're down to one screen. Good, okay. Um, okay, seeing no more. I'm going to close it to public testimony for tonight.
You're closing it to public testimony forever, Amy.
I'm closing it to public testimony forever. Back to the board.
So, yes, Madam Chair, I have a number of motions that I will make.
Okay.
Starting with one. Uh, so the fight find sign up. So for the record. The final site plan by Allen Engineering dated September seventeen, twenty twenty-one. And the final architectural plans by Harrison Mulhern Architects dated July ninth, twenty twenty-one. Will be the plan, site plan and architectural plans on record. For all the motions. The conditions that we have read, gone over, discussed and changed. Will be the conditions for all the motions. So one, I move that we grant a special permanent site plan approval percent pursuant. To section one ninety dash thirty-two and one ninety dash forty-five. Of the Wakefield zoning by law. Allowing a fifty-eight unit mid-rise apartment in combination with a restaurant use. In the three point one seventy square foot area designated as the mixed-use area. And more particularly shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. And I make this motion based on the following findings. The use requested as listed in table of use regulations is requiring a special permit in the district. That this application was made. The requested use is essential and desirable to the pub public public convenience and welfare. And there's a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield. And the surrounding area. See, the requested use will not create or add undue traffic congestion or un. Dooley impair pedestrian safety. We had both our traffic consultant. Uh and a number of discussions about this. Uh in the public hearings. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Or any other municipal system for such an extent. That the requested use or any developed used in the immediate area. Or in any other area of the town. Will unduly subject to hazards affecting health, safety or general welfare. Um, we've had town engineering look at all the plans. And we've met, uh, the applicant has met all their. Requirements. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. Or adjoining districts. Nor be determined to be to the public health, convenience or wealth. Welfare. The requested use will not by its addition to a neighborhood. Cause in excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. This use will put a vacated or blighted property to a beneficial use. And add to the affordable housing inventory. Um, we certainly spent enough time discussing the project. And. We found that it would be a good project for this site. The proposed use will be determined that the neighborhood and it will. Not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore. The non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not noxious to the residential use. Section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws, we also reviewed this section of the bylaw. Which is pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan. The special permitting granting authority, us and the other applicable agency. Shall consider among other things the following. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjust adjacent streets. Projects and improvements. Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage reef refuse and other waste. And the methods of surface and stormwater drainage. I think we talked about dumpster location and dumpster pickup. More on this project other than any others. Three, the provision for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings. And related related uses on the lot or track. We considered all of the above criteria and I think we found it satisfactory. And we would attach the conditions already presented to this. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none. Um, so we're gonna do Jim, Chip, Amy, Joe and Tom. Um, so Jim.
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Amy, I vote yes.
Okay. Number two, that we grant a special permit percent pursuant. To section one ninety dash thirty-two dot one. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaws, allowing the reductions and or alterations. To the dimensional requirements under section one ninety dash thirty-two D. And table two of the bylaw. Related to a fifty-eight unit mid-rise apartment. In combination with a restaurant use as shown on the final site plan. And final architectural plans, including. The following. A. Allowing a reduction in the required front side and rear setbacks. To be that as shown on the final site plan. B. Allowing a floor area ratio of two point oh two. And as shown on the final play site plan. C, allowing a maximum height of sixty-five feet. And as shown on the final site plan and architectural plans. Allowing the building coverage of forty-seven point five percent and as shown on the final site and architectural plan. Allowing open. Area of five point four percent as shown on the fights. Plan. And. F. Any other. Reductions and or alterations from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two D and table two of the Wakefield zoning by law. To allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. This has the same findings as the last special permit. And the reductions and or alterations will enhance the multifamily project. As a whole and allow it to be. Benefit the neighborhood in which it's situated. And the conditions have already been presented. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, same voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Number three. That we grant a variance from the requirements and standards of off-street parking and loading. Under article seven of the Wakefield zoning by law is shown. A, a reduction in the number of required parking spaces under one sixty. Under section one ninety dash forty-one, table three. Of the bylaw, reducing the required number of parking spaces to a total of ninety-two parking spaces. For the fifty-eight residential units and the restaurant use. Section one ninety dash thirty-seven C, reducing the required size of some of the parking spaces. To allow the parking spaces as shown on the final site plan. C, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D of the bylaw. Allowing the width of aisles to be as shown in. On the final site plan. D, section one ninety dash thirty-seven E. Of the bylaws follows. One, allowing the setback of off-street parking areas to be closer than seven point five feet to the building as shown on the final site plan. Two, reducing the requirements of a fifteen-foot wide landscape strip. Separating the open parking areas from the street line. And reducing the requirement of landscaping the interior of the parking lot. So as to allow the landscaping and screening to be as shown on the final site plan. And the final lot landscaping plan. E, section one ninety dash thirty-seven. One of the bylaw. Allowing the width of the driveway serving parking facilities. To be shown in the set as the sun. To be shown on the final site plan. And E, any other necessary reductions. In the requirements and or standards of for off-street parking and loading. Under article seven of the bylaw. Related to the project as shown on the. Final site plan and final architectural plans. Our findings are as follows. There was an unusual circumstance affecting land and structures, right? The applicant. Has has agreed to reduce exist existing curb cuts. That will be a benefit to the neighborhood. The property currently houses two large box-shaped. Vacant buildings formerly used as a warehouse and a lumberyard. The existing buildings will be raised in the project where as a result in environmental remediation. That will be a benefit to the property and the neighborhood as a whole. The situation provides a unique circumstance relating to the land and structures. Under hardship, we found that the application with standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw. Proves to be infeasible and reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility. Due to access and egress limitation and design. Considerations. So then it comes to substantial detriment or degradation. And we find that the requested relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially degradating. From the. Degregate, degradating from the. Intent and purpose of the bylaw. And we add the conditions as already presented. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, same voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And Madam Chair, I believe that is all they were looking for and all that we needed to find and. Wraps up. I don't know how many months of hearings.
A lot.
Lots.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian and team.
It's gonna be another nice Chris Mulhern design project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris and. Malatson, thank you for doing another good project. Should be good.
Yep, thank you.
Buy more property on Foundry.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna go um out of order and we're going to take up. It is on pay on. Oh, no, it's um, I'm sorry. Brian, help me out.
Grafton Street.
Thank you, Grafton Street. Um. We're going to take that one up next. So, Brian, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. Uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail. Representing Sean Brady and Kristen and Nick Ademski, who are owners of property at twenty-two Grafton Street in Wakefield. Um, and they are both, I I know Kristen's on and I think also Sean's on. Uh, the Zoom tonight, I'm gonna do the majority of the presentation, but they're here in the event that you have any questions. Um, uh, Kristen and Sean on a nice property at twenty-two. A Grafton Street and they would like to put a, what I would call a very modest addition onto it. Um, it's an undersized lot, as you'll see in a minute. Did that come up on the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's an undersized lot. It has unique circumstances to it that I think can can um. Can justify the variance request. Um, as I've mentioned, the property is twenty-two Grafton Street. Um, it has fifty feet of frontage, five thousand square feet. This is a very old lot. That was the old standard for zoning, pre-zoning. Statutory standard private zoning. Um, so it's a pretty small lot. Um, and it also has two streets. It has Aim Street and Grafton, although the frontage is designated as Grafton. That is the address. Um, it has a pretty tight setback to uh Aim Street, as you can see, only two and a half feet. Um, and it's somewhat unique because of those two frontages and also because of the way that the building is offset. Um, they have, um, as you'll see when I bring up the architectural plans, Kristen and Sean have a. Um, very small mudroom in, we call it a powder room, which is, you know, really, there's no shower or anything in it. Um, and all they're looking to do is to raise that. Uh, and I think it's important to note, when you look at this, the stairs currently come off the side. And when we, and so they kind of further encroach it. So when we, when what we're proposing, the stairs will come off the back. So they wanna uh raise this. Uh, small addition that's there now or a small structure. That is currently fifteen point five uh feet back. Um, and they want to build. A little bit bigger, as you can see. And that and that will uh then be eleven point seven feet uh back. Um, so. That is the variance. They're also requesting for a finding because they, as you can obviously see, everything is basically non-conforming on this lot. Um, and I'm going to. I think the architectural plans will also be helpful, so if I could. Bring those up. Give you an idea. So this is the existing conditions. Uh, as I've mentioned, this is, this is the area that we're talking to. Out here at the bottom of your screen is Grafton. Ames is on this side. Um, this, this is the powder room that we talked about and the small mudroom, and this is how it works now with the deck comes off and the stairs go out back. Um, and this kind of, this is existing conditions. So from the front elevation from Grafton, you can see. As it as exists today with the stairs off to the side. Um, from the side, from the neighbor's view, you can, you can kind of see what's going on here. Um, and then from the rear, you can also see it right here. As the stairs uh come back, the other side, the left really doesn't uh impact this at all. So, again, this is from the front. This is from the side, from the neighbor that see it, and this is from the rear. Okay? So here's what they're proposing. Little bit bigger, same area. Um, now we have a a full bath with a shower, which will help a growing family in need. Um, also, the mudroom is pretty much gonna be a mudroom, but it's gonna have a, you know, a sink, a working sink in it. Um, and some cabinetry. Um, and then. Um, we're taking this staircase off the side, so the neighbors won't have to deal with that more people coming in and out. And now the doorway is gonna be here and the stair is gonna come down to the backyard. So you'd be able to see that on these elevations. So this is the front elevation from Grafton and it shows the the new addition. This is now the neighbor is not looking at stairs anymore. They're just looking at the addition and the stairs are kind of buried, as I mentioned. And then this is the rear elevation, which you can kind of see how. This addition, as you can see, goes out a little bit beyond the house in the back, and that's how the stairs can come out the side. Um, and go down. Um, I think I know in these circumstances, it's 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 always um. Important for the board to make sure that we reached out to neighbors. Especially those that would be directly affected. Um, and Kristen and Sean did do that. They have great relationships in the neighborhood. Um, uh, Minji Cataclogon lives right next door at twenty-four Grafton Street. Um, and um, those are the folks that will look at this. They're they're the neighbors and and as you can see. Uh, Kristen and Sean approached them, reviewed the plans. Um, and they support the applications and benefit to the neighborhood and they respect respectfully requested the board approve it. Um, five Aim Street is right behind them. Those are really the only properties that are directly affected. Um, by this, um, I think. Let me just stop this. And I'm gonna show you. Just wanna give the board kind of a context plan. So this, this shows you um. Sean's house and Kristen's house. And this really shows you who's affected. So this is twenty-four who have supported this and five have also supported other people. And this really shows you who's affected. So this is twenty four who have supported this and five have also supported other people like twenty three support it, but. You know, they just reached out for the but these two mainly impacted people are in support of the project. I think. When you go back and I'm gonna go back to the site plan. I think as far as the finding goes, we we are further encroaching. So I think this would go to. A second prong that and I think it's, you know, really substantial, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, what's happening here. I think I would defer to the board, but I think that's a pretty straightforward finding, especially considering the size of the lot. The modest size of the addition. When you look at the zoning table. The front yard setback isn't changing. The reason he put nineteen point one, he wanted to show how far back the addition was from the street, but the house is staying at five. The side yard setback is going from fifteen point five to eleven point seven. And nothing else is changing except for the maximum building coverage. The maximum allowed is thirty percent. Even with this addition, we meet that requirement at twenty one point eight. And the minimum open area is easily met. The minimum is forty percent. It's currently seventy five and. You can see the modestness of this addition because it's only going from seventy five to seventy two on open space and building coverage. So I think it's pretty evident there's not substantially detrimental from the finding as far as the variance goes. I think there are unique circumstances to this lot. Two frontages, close setback to Ames, an original lot on the zoning, very narrow lot that did comply at the time. Hardship, as we've mentioned, you know, I think growing families need space to grow. They just want a full sized bathroom. And a little bit bigger of a mudroom. It would be a hardship if they weren't able to do this. And it's certainly not a detriment to the neighborhood because anyone affected in the neighborhood has supported the project. Happy to take questions, Mr. Chair or Madam Chair, I should say. Apologize for that.
Of course they have it, right?
Yeah.
So I have just some correspondence with the different boards in town. The fire department has reviewed the application. And they have no objection at this point. The DPW. Let's see, DPW Engineering Division has performed a review. Of the September first twenty twenty one Board of Appeals Application for the above referenced project. The application was submitted. To include the following documents. There are no after the world comments from DPW Engineering at this time. And Concom says that it is not within their jurisdiction. So that's what I have for that. Board members, anything right now?
Yeah, Brian, I just want to confirm something. I hear you say. That the hardship was based on the size. And shape of the lot.
Well, yeah, this well.
Because.
Shape's pretty rectangular. It's really the size, but also just the structures on the lot and limitations of the lot because it's.
Right, but but the it's not a hardship because I want to do it. Right, there's there's gotta be a the hardships are are facts, whether it's the size of the lot that. Doesn't allow them to do it or the shape or the old zoning or all of that because they want a bigger bathroom. Isn't a hardship.
Well, yeah, it is because it it affects the property. I mean, there's unique, the this three prongs, the unique circumstances, which I think I I've stated are unique to this lot. And you know, the the hardship is the fact that. They have nowhere else to put, you know, this on that works with the way the structure is situated on the property.
That's fine. I agree with that. I'm just saying. That the personal stuff doesn't come into play.
No, 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 I I hear you on that. I mean, personal desires don't come into play.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anyone else? No. Sorry. Okay. Brian, anything else to add? Okay, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public. If any member of the public would like to speak or ask a question on what they've heard. Please raise your hand either. With the raise hand button or just wave your hand at the screen and I'll try to find you. With me. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close it to public testimony and bring it back to the board, board members.
Yeah, we can just leave this up. Madam Chair, I finding first and then the variant second. Any preference, Brian?
No, that'd be fine.
Okay. I move that we find that based on the plan presented to us tonight by J and B surveyors dated July tenth twenty twenty one. That. The addition being proposed. Does exasperate the nonconformity of the lot and size of the building. However, it does not segregate the integrity of the. Neighborhood. And thus. I find that. It should be allowed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, so we'll do. Chip. Jim.
Yes.
Oh, no. Oh, I was just saying the the voting members first. Jim, Chip, Amy, Joe. And Tom, could you second it that? So Jim?
Yes.
Chip.
Now can I say yes?
Yep.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I also move that we grant the variance based on the site plan and architectures presented tonight. For. The addition to twenty two Grafton Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none same voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kristen, you want to say anything? You're all good? You're amused.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. All right. Now back to our regularly scheduled program. Let's see who we have now. So we are going to go to twenty two dash eight VCA Wakefield Animal Hospital sixty Autobahn Road.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Let's see. So last time we were here, we were discussing about a building setbacks and. The total square footage of signage on the building. I've been in I've been in touch with Jim going back and forth. On. So we found that the building is setback a hundred and five feet and three inches from Autobahn Road. And it's setback a hundred thirty feet and two inches from Teal Road. And let's see, and then the the total square footage of signage that's existing on the building. Including freestanding signage is a hundred seventy eight point oh six square feet. And I I relayed all that to to Jim and. Let's see, he he informed me that the the building itself did did not need relief for the. Need a second variance for the additional signage that we are proposing. Let's see, we're. A little refresher, we're still proposing the the rear VCA Animal Hospital signage for to be facing I ninety five to help increase the. Visibility of the animal hospital. And the proposed square footage of that sign is fifty five point two zero square feet, so. Five five point two square feet over the allowable size.
Do you happen to have an electronic version that you could put up on the screen?
Yes, sorry. I was last time I did that, my computer crashed.
Oh, that's right. I forgot.
Let's see. Oh, um, I'm.
Can you share it or not yet? Let me see if I can grab this. Well, you know, I think I have to do it from my phone because I'm the host on my phone. Hold on. Okay, it should be all set now.
Let's see, share screen. There we go. Let's see. Can can you guys see? See it already?
Yes.
Great. So just just went out to the site with with a tape measure and just walk walk from. The the edge of the road to the building. Let's see, here are the the sign drawings. Let's see, VCA's frontage in the in the rear of the building is. A hundred and ten feet and ten inches and in the front of the building, they have a hundred seventeen feet and eleven inches. Let's see, set that. And here. Here's the the building dimensions that I was able to get off of the Wakefield GIS website. Happy to answer any any questions anyone might have.
Board members.
Oh, so let me step in here. So the. Dave brought up the fact whether the signage with its total aggregate signage basically complied. Or not, and the information was not available to us. So Ed had provided us also, which is not shown here, but it exists. Is a site plan. Got from his client and so. Based on the site plan and there are two roads surrounding this building. So you take the perimeter of that basically and and multiply it times one point five. And you end up basically. Allowing. About a thousand one hundred and seventy six square feet allowed. The. Current total on the building is a hundred and seventy eight, so it's not even close. When you add the new sign, basically it's two hundred and thirty three square feet. So they've they've got a lot more room basically to put more signs on this building. Then than the maximum allowed. So this is a non issue at this point and we're back to basically. Two items. One is the area of the sign itself. And the height of the sign. So that all falls under basically one ninety seventy seven E. One A. So what we need to do is basically if we all agree. That this sign is. Is appropriate to the rear of the building, which is allowed because it's. In the rear on a parking lot. They can have a sign back there. It's just the sizing that's in question. And in the case of the sizing. The. Sign can only be fifty square feet and this is fifty seven square feet. And the height allowed is three square, three feet high, and this is four and a half feet high. So this, that's what we need to vote on. Questions?
If I can just remind the board that. We are about eight hundred feet from the highway. The neighboring businesses are between seventy five and a hundred feet from the highway. So it's it's quite a distance and it's a distance that can only be seen in the winter months. So for what that's worth.
And could you remind me, is this gonna be a lit sign?
Yes.
Yes.
How lit?
It's gonna be internally illuminated, white LEDs. I can, I don't have the spec sheet of the LEDs we use in front of me. It's GE twelve volt. I believe they they're around six thousand lumens. And you know, it's the the standard LED that we use in all of our signs.
The neighboring business signs are also all backlit.
Will we are we backlit or we or we?
So that's it's internally illuminated and the faces will be lit. There is no halo illumination to the signage.
Right.
I mean, I personally don't have a problem with being. The fact that it's so far from the highway and it's the back of the building and there's plenty of room on the building for other signs that. Have it be a foot and a half taller and. You know, square footage being seven feet more than it's allowed. I think it's totally acceptable in my opinion.
The other restriction, I guess, in the code is that it can only be, it cannot be on between eleven and seven. Eleven PM to seven AM.
So we we set up all the signs with a with a time clock and that's that's very easy to adjust the settings that. Once it hits that hour, it'll turn on and. Turn off on its own, so we don't even, you know, it's set it and forget it.
Okay.
Any other board members with anything? No. Okay, and back to Ed and Sarah. Do you guys have anything else to add? No, okay. I will open it up to public testimony. If anybody has a question or comment, please raise your hand. And I'll call on you as I see you. And not seeing any. I will close the public testimony and back to the board.
I make a mo I make a motion that we. Allow the variance as presented to us by the drawings. By Patton Brothers along with the electrical specs from Superior. To be. Built as seen with the condition that they adhere to. The by law. In regards to time.
So you're you're basic, it's a variance from just for record, it's a variance from one ninety seventy seven E one A.
As presented tonight. You already presented that.
Revised September seventeenth.
And do we? We don't really need to condition because we're not granting a variance for the time.
I guess you're right.
So don't put a condition in the decision.
Not a condition that it's a by law, so we don't need to condition what is already a law. You're right.
As usual.
Easy.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, alternate.
I'm gonna stop talking for the rest of the meeting, so I can't.
Actually, Greg, why don't you second the motion so we can get moving?
Second. At second as amended, I guess.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? And do we remember if Dave read in town correspondence to this already?
Uh, yeah, the 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 advertising in the newspaper.
Not that the the DPW or Concom, their comments.
Amy, you don't always get them. I mean, a sign, they probably won't send you anything.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I have them. I just don't know if they were right into the record. It looks like.
They were written last time. Dave did.
Okay, perfect. Okay, all right. So we're gonna do Jim, Chip, Amy, Joe and Greg this time. So Jim?
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Myself, yes. We are all set.
All right.
You'll just have to. Get in touch with Gail to send Gail. They send you something?
No, you get to write it, Amy.
Okay, yay. All right, so I'll I'll send you something. For your review and then we can get it going from there. Gail, you have his email and everything, though? Gail, you have his email and everything, though?
I do, Amy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Good luck.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Let's see who's next. ID Sign Group Inc. for Shaw's supermarket, 134 Water Street. Whenever you're ready.
Do you think?
Hello.
Hey, Amy.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm gonna recuse myself just so one of the alternates can vote.
Okay.
But that also means they're gonna have, somebody else is gonna have to make the motion.
Okay.
It's not a tough one.
No. All right, go ahead, Jamie.
So Jamie Fisher with ID Sign Group, 9 Bristol Drive. This is continuation from our prior hearing. I believe that was on, what, the 8th? And essentially, what I've brought forth are four conceptual renderings, option A, B, C, and D. If I may share my screen, I can pull these up. Share with the board.
Sure, give me one second. Keep forgetting I have to do it from my phone. Where are you? Okay, it should be good.
Great. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. How about now?
Yes.
Yep.
All righty. So what you have here is option A. If you thought, you guys can all see my cursor, yeah?
Oh, yep.
Okay, so you have option A up here in the left corner. This option is 10.65 square feet revised from the previous option. In this option, you see the conceptual rendering portraying this illuminated capsule in the first proposed location that we had discussed down in the center of the screen here. If you look to your right, you'll see the Shaw's letter set and capsule internally illuminated. All right. The next option. If I can get to it, bear with me for a moment. I apologize. So how do I? There we go. All right, so option B is essentially the same option. However, this iteration is not illuminated. So as you'll see, there's no conceptual rendering for LEDs. There's no specs on LEDs. There's no internally illuminated visual of said LEDs. This is the non-illuminated option. So if you scroll back to A and B, they're the exact same thing. Both a three-inch-deep capsule. Option A is illuminated. Option B is not illuminated. Now, option C is the second proposed location. Option C is 11.54 square feet. And this is the internally illuminated option up on the band, consistent and in plane with, you know, the taglines such as shop the world, seafood, cafe. And then you have option D, which is our last option, and option D is essentially a duplicate non-illuminated option similar to options C. So you have location one, location two. On location one, you have illuminated, non-illuminated. On location two, you have illuminated, non-illuminated. Now, preferably, you know, our client would like to illuminate the sign. It's consistent with other illuminated signs in the area. It's 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 pretty standard practice considering, you know, the grocery shop is open beyond nightfall. So it would help in terms of visibility. However, if, you know, the board should be opposed to the illumination, we've presented an option where we can implement a non-illuminated capsule as well. So we're open to feedback and consideration from the board, so I guess this is a good spot for me to turn it over.
Perfect. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Board members? Thoughts?
D.
Yeah.
Non-illuminated.
I'm leaning D, too.
Less light, the better. I mean, the Shaw sign, the store's open at nightfall, but the Shaw signs on at nightfall, too, so.
Yeah.
No, no one's gonna mistake it to be enclosed.
Right, okay. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm fine with that option D. It's good.
Okay. So Jamie, that that would be fine, obviously, I guess, with your team. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Of course.
Perfect. I think we're, it sounds like we're all might be in agreement on that option. That might be the best way for us to move forward, but we will open it up to public testimony. So if anybody from the public has a comment or question, please raise your hand. And I see Bronwyn has a question. Go ahead.
Hi, Bronwyn Delavalle, Cyrus Street. I'm so relieved to hear you guys. I like the option D, the non-illuminated placement. I would go with either B or D. I'll obviously leave it up to you guys, but I must stress, thank you very much for leaning towards the non-illumination. There's enough light and enough light spill and trespass coming from this side as it is. We we really don't need more. And and kudos to Jamie for offering those two non-illuminated renderings. That was good of him and very helpful. And I thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else comment or question? Seeing none, I'm gonna come back to the board. Anybody have anything else?
Amy, real quick, do we know if that Shaw's sign, Jim, do you know, is that lit all night long? Does it does it shut off it?
I I think there's probably a stipulation within the agreement that we have with them that's off. I can't tell you what they're actually running running, but I'm pretty sure they've got their meeting, they're, they were stipulated to meet the requirements. They haven't changed.
To shut off like a half hour after closing.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just curious.
Jamie, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm good. Fair compromise.
Yeah.
So let me ask a question here, Jamie. Then that, this means that this sign is ending up to be four square feet? 24 by 24?
No, sir, it would it would be the overall image area, I would imagine, 69 and a quarter by.
No, it's not. It's it's the square of the space. So 24 by 24, basically, it's gonna be four square feet.
Okay, so are we not calculating the the verbiage drive up and go?
I'm sorry, you are correct. You are correct. So what, so what is the? So, so 60.
69 and a quarter.
It 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 equates to 11.54.
Okay, because I've got some stuff here, 11. All right, so I can make a proposal here, I guess. If anybody's ready.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we should, we should grant, zoning board should grant permission to increase the proposed pedestrian size sign of five square feet as required under 190, 77E that dot one to allow for a new proposed pedestrian sign drive up and go at of 11.54 square feet on parking side lot is noted on drawing ID Sign Group dated revised date 9, 10, 21. Option D, non-lit. That's the proposal.
A question then on that proposal, Jim, because you went into detail ad nauseam last time about pedestrian sign, which was at eye level. Option D doesn't have it at eye level, so do we have to?
Yeah.
Say it's a pedestrian sign?
Yeah, and I, well, I had, there's another, I don't know, I don't know how to separate this, so I have separated. So the other one is allow pedestrian sign to be that, let's see, allow for a pedestrian sign to be at eye eye level as required by 190, 77, but set at a new elevation to the center of the top of the, and I don't know what the height of that is.
True.
So we just need to know a height from Jamie.
We could just say a set for what's in the plans. We know where it's going on the building.
Okay.
But understood, I understand now on this motion, so that's fine.
There's this, I mean, it's, we're basically asking for two items, basically. One doesn't have a one doesn't have a section number only because it's under definition. So we're accepting the definition because no other definition fits in this particular case. So it's it's not, it's a pedestrian sign, but it's at a higher elevation allowed by definition.
Understood, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? See none. So we're gonna do Jim, Amy, Joe, Mike, and Greg on this one. So Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You are, that's, it was just the one, right, that we needed?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so you're.
Hold on, Jim, I thought you said you were making a second one to say the pedestrian sign.
Well, I, that's the one I read, basically, the next one, which was to allow for a pedestrian sign to be above eye level as defined under 190 dash 76 and set at an elevation that centers on centers on or is at the height noted on ID draw, ID group drawings dated 9, 10, 21.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Same voting members, Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we good? Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I'll send that off to you, Jamie, and Gail, you have his email as well.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So we'll be in touch with email for the decision.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye now.
All right. So that's it for continued hearings. Now we're gonna move on to the new hearing, 22 dash 10, Nicole McShane, 34 Payon Boulevard. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, board. My name's Gary LaPresti. I am the general contractor for Nicole. And I think she's with us along with her mother, Eileen. Although I'm not new to the zoning process, I am very new to the Zoom zoning process, so I'm gonna do my best to try to hear the plans on the screen with everybody.
I'm just gonna add you as a host so that you can do that. Bear with me one second. Okay, it should be good now. We can see them.
Did that come up?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the existing floor plan. So they look, this is the garage right here, which is attached to the house right now, 13 by 28. So they're looking to convert that to a living space for her mother to make it a more comfortable area for her. She has been living with them for a number of years and stairs can be difficult and whatnot. So we're looking to convert this to a full living area. I'll see if I can pull up.
Can I just ask you to speak up a little bit, please?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. We're just looking to convert this existing attached garage to a more comfortable living space for for her mother into a full living area. She currently lives with her now. She's been with her for a number of years. Stairs can be difficult. It could be a little crammed in the house, so this is on a ground level. I'll see if I can pull up the other. Did it change screens?
No, it's the same one.
Same one. I can't pull up the new one.
You may have to close that one and then open up a new one. Sometimes that works.
How's that?
Yep, that's there.
Okay, so this is the the proposed area. We're not changing the footprint of the house. This is the same square footage, and this is what the inside would be converted to. So here's your top view. And then kind of a 3D model here of everything else. So this area here, this is an existing egress right here. There is another egress at the rear on this end. This is the existing garage door, which we would just convert to either French doors or a larger window.
So Gary, I'm sure if I may.
Yep.
In order to do an accessory apartment, there's a number of square footage issues that have to be met. Do you have a chart of that? Normally, you come up with how many square feet it is versus how many square feet of the house. There's percentages that it has to meet or not meet right in the zoning bylaw. We tend not to do those, that math that's supposed to be presented to us.
Okay.
Did you go to the bylaw?
I did. I it does meet the square footage because I did do that, but I do not have the actual figures with me.
We need it for record and to clearly understand what you're doing, but it needs to go into record basically as part of this submission.
Okay, so you're looking for me to, I just want to make some notes so I can.
So if you go to the bylaw and read this section, it says it can be no greater than X, it has to be so many square feet and it can no be no greater than X percentage of the rest of the house and all those things. So it really lays out what it can and can't be. And then you present how you meet the bylaw. What you've done with, it's not changing the footprint and all of that, that is certainly part of it. But it's all the square footage is that need to be met, that needs to be verified.
Okay.
And then, guys, how do we feel about like non-stamped certified square footages?
Yeah, we're gonna need a stamped copy.
Well, do we? I'm asking, not telling.
No, I'm I'm agreeing with that. Or answering yes to what you're asking. I don't know.
I'm okay if somebody signs that this is exactly what's gonna be built and it's the same as the building permit. We need to get an architect to stamp it.
Well, I was gonna say, as long as they can confirm that they're not changing the footprint.
That kind of means it, it's not gonna grow, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, I have a question, might be on Ben's hand, but I feel he's.
Yeah, well, I have a question, might be on Ben's hand, but I feel he's gotta add a window to that bedroom, because there's only one exit. Am I crazy?
There will be, um, this here will be.
In the bedroom itself?
It's probably, Joe, it's probably within the enough lineal foot to get to it.
Is there a wind, is there another window in that bedroom, I, I, I can't see it on the plan, that's why.
It's a Ben issue, not ours.
No, I know, I, I feel like if he adds a window, would he have to come back to us then? If he adds a window after the fact.
No, it's not site plan review. Or special permit or anything.
It's more, it's more, does it not change the existence and what are the square footages and does it beat the bylaws? It's a pretty simple thing, it's just we're not supposed to do the math. Supposed to be presented to us.
So do we?
We need to continue.
Right, should I open it to public?
Might as well, see if anybody objects to it.
Okay, um, so at this time I'll open it to the public, if anybody has a question or comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Um, I do have some letters from. Other boards in town, let me see this one. It's from the fire department. They have no objection to the, uh, project, Concon. I have reviewed the application submitted to the Board of Appeals to allow an accessory apartment at the subject. Address, although, although a portion of the subject site is within the commission's jurisdiction. The, uh, conversion of a garage into an apartment would not require the applicant to file with the commission. And then DPW, did you see, um, the DPW finding? No, okay, so it is. Uh, the DPW requires that the applicant, uh, submit a sewer inflow infiltration INI. Fee to, uh, compensate the removal of a four to one ratio from the sewer system inflow. The fee is four hundred and fifty dollars per additional bedroom and is estimated to be four hundred and fifty dollars for the additional bedroom to the site. Please submit the INI fee to the DPW engineering prior to the building permit, uh, approval. And that's what I have from the town boards, anybody else, board members? No. Somebody wanna make a motion to continue?
Move that we continues to our next hearing, which is. October. Help me, somebody with a calendar. You, Gail, October thirteenth. Well, that's a full night, too.
Assuming they're okay with October thirteenth, the applicant, I assume they would be, but we usually get there important if they want that one or next one or.
Gary, do you think you'll be ready at that point, or do you need more time?
Yes, I, I just pulled up the bylaws now, um, but I don't wanna take up more of your time doing calculations while we're sitting here, so. Um, I can, I can definitely put this stuff together, pay the DPW fee. And I'll be ready.
Perfect, okay. Do we have a second, oh, did you second that, Greg?
I, I do now.
Okay, motion made and seconded, uh, any discussion? No, uh, Jim.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, so we'll see you back on the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And let's see. Crafton Street, already, so now we have, onto other matters, um, nineteen dash seventy-one, eleven eighty-eight Main Street. So mine Realty Trust, discuss minor mods.
Good evening, board, um, my name is Paul Beer, I'm the, uh, general contractor on, uh, eleven eighty-eight Main Street. Chairwoman, if you can make me call host, I'm gonna try to, yeah, share screen here again, let's see if we can do this.
Deal with me, Paul. Okay, go ahead.
Alright, thank you very much, um. I believe the last hearing we had, the continuation from two weeks ago was in reference to having the architect re-stamp. Uh, or update and re-stamp the, uh, plans. Can you see that?
Yeah, that's up.
Okay, um. It's actually on page number five, which we did all the, uh, changes. Uh, as you can see, all the stamps were updated on the, um, right-hand side here as I scroll down. I believe you all, all the board members have the updated plans. Um, but here are the modifications that, uh, we requested, um. I did not this week include the narrative from the last hearing, but I do have it up if, uh, like to review it. Can you see that narrative? Actually, let me see if I can bring it up to two hundred percent, how's that? Can everybody see that a little bit better?
Still the same, it hasn't gone yet.
Oh, sorry, let me try to close that out. Where'd it go now? I completely lost it, sorry, uh, let me try to find it again, hang on, one second. That was the plans.
Paul, you might have to close that window out and then reopen the other one.
Yeah, actually, let me, um. There it is, let me, hang on, let me try to make it a little bit bigger here. Is that a little bit bigger?
Yep, that's good.
Alright, sorry about that, um, but basically, uh, the first. First floor, we moved the, um, second, uh, I'm sorry, on the first line, we moved the second floor, uh, door. To line up with the first floor, so they line up in, in, uh, conjunction with one another. Um, we also proposed adding a second, uh. Twenty-six by forty-two window with a ten-inch transit, and this is all on the, uh, second floor, next to that door. Um, keeping the existing twenty-six by forty-two, the only addition, uh, proposed addition that we were. Uh, proposing, adding a ten inch, ten inch transient on the top of the, uh, existing or originally proposed window. Uh, we also, um, requested eliminating on the first floor. Um, a. Twenty, uh, I'm sorry, we proposed adding a twenty-six by forty-two and eliminating a thirty-four by forty-two. That was, uh, written correctly, incorrectly, so the, um, the first one. Is basically with thirty-four by forty-two was to be eliminated and add just a twenty-six by forty-two, no transient on this window. Okay, um, on the left elevation. We basically proposed eliminating a twenty-six by forty-two and adding a, uh, twenty-six by forty-two with a ten-inch transient on the top. So all we did is add an existing ten-inch transient, these are all on the second floor, so. Pretty much every window on the second floor, the, uh, homeowner would like a, a ten-inch transient added. Um, we also proposed eliminating on the second floor, twenty-six by thirty-eight with the ten-inch transient. So completely eliminating a window, um, on that second floor, which we can go back and we can, um, look at on the plans. We also proposed eliminating, um, another window on the first floor that was originally proposed by the architect. Um, on the right side of the elevation, we moved the twenty-six by forty-two closer to the proposed window. And proposed adding a ten-inch transient also, so that's also on the second floor. Um, the reason why we, uh, uh, proposing moving it over, it would just be sitting on top of a staircase. It would be an inoperable window pretty much, because there's probably six feet high to even get to this, to the bottom of this window. And that's why we're requesting, uh, to move it over, uh, we also, um, existing proposed the twenty-six by forty-two. To stay in the same spot, but to add a, uh, ten-inch transient, so there was originally proposed just a twenty-six by forty-two. And we're adding a ten-inch transient to the window next to the one that we're moving over. And on the first floor, we're just, uh, proposing moving that twenty-six by forty-two. Um, over closer to the existing, um, window, closer to the edge of the house. And the reason for that is basically, it would be a window inside of a utility room that really wouldn't. Serve any purpose, so that's the narrative that I proposed the, um, last hearing. And if we can go back, I'll go back to the, um. Uh, plans now and we can see. Can everybody see that?
Paul, I, I have a quick question, are these the same plans? That you got granted a building permit for? Are these the plans that are in the building department?
These are, yes, so the footprint, the existing footprint of this property or the addition, I'm sorry. Of the proposed addition has never changed. The only minor modification that, um, I'm requesting is basically changing the window schedule. Which, based on these drawings, doesn't even have a window schedule. Um, so we basically just went off of the, um, the. Design, one of the designs that, um, Phoenix Architects proposed to us. Um, these, so.
So I want just a yes or no answer. Are the, the plans that got the building permit pulled on?
Yes.
Okay.
It, the, it, it gets a little, it gets a little complicated, because it's like. Right now I'm trying to just understand, I didn't change the, we didn't, we're not requesting or asking for a modification on any of the footprint. We're just requesting modification on windows, so the original said, yes, this is what we submitted, that's what we got approved for. And this is why, if you notice on the, um, chip down here on the bottom, six twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen. I believe there was a hearing done in, uh, June of two thousand and nineteen, so pre-COVID. And it was approved for these sets of plans, and then as you can see, they were revised. I asked, uh, uh, the architects to include the revisions for your, um, knowledge.
Thank you.
Uh, that's pretty much all I'm requesting, uh, if you have any questions, feel free.
So that, so going back to your original drawings that you brought last time. Which was, which was dated three eighteen twenty-one, it says bid set, not for construction. Is that not the set that you brought to the building department for permit?
The, I'm sorry, the.
The set marked as, as bid set, not for construction, which you showed last time. Was that not the, the set of drawings that you got a permit on?
Let me ask you, uh, I, I just want a little clarification on that, Jim, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, you got a name?
Yep, no.
The, the set of plans that I proposed the last time were, there was multiple sets of plans. That were given to me for the as-bills, or the builds, okay? Um, there was the, the set that was submitted to the building department and given, the ones that I submitted last. I actually submitted because, uh, Brian, the chairman, correct? Uh, he questioned who made the changes and there was no architectural plan, okay? Um, so there was multiple sets of plans set for this, okay? Um, so in reference to your question. The set of plans that was submitted as a bid set, that was not the one submitted to the building department.
But when I look at the drawings, the floor plans. The window relocation, as you proposed, is dimensionally shown on the drawings for that bid set only. The one you marked up at the last meeting, when I look at the current set of plans that are before us. It's, the plans are not up to date. So which set is it?
With, I mean, what, what do you mean by they're not up to date, because these, the, the drawings that were.
The window locations on the plan dimensionally are, I believe. Representative of the changes you want to make here.
And don't we have, don't we have, don't we have a revision date on these?
Yes, it's down on the revision down here, nine fifteen. It's nine fifteen twenty twenty-one.
I'm asked, I'm, well, it's, it's interesting.
Aren't you asking the same question I just asked?
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, that's, what's before us right now. The plans don't reflect the changes that are proposed, the plans, not the elevation, the plans. Whereby the previous set, the plans reflected. Basically the changes, so.
Do we care?
With, okay, with.
There's a lack of coordination here, and I understand some of the issue is multiple sets of drawings. Basically issued to this four gentlemen. Um, that cau, this causes the confusion here, I don't, like personally, I don't care. Um, what the changes are on the window, I don't think they make a hill of beans basically difference. But, uh, you know, someone ought to hear that there's, there's more here basically than meets the eye. And so I go back to your question is, which one is the permit set on?
The permit set is on the June twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen plans, which these are the original plans. As set by Phoenix Architects, now I grabbed.
But the floor, I think what Jim's saying, Paul, the floor plans have never been updated. You've just updated the elevations with your requests. If you were to pull the floor plans, the floor plans don't show these changes.
The, the actual, I'm sorry, let's go down to page, uh. These here, I'm sorry, so page number three, they do not, but the.
The answer is they don't, the floor plans don't reflect any requested changes.
Correct, they don't, but the request last time was for me, the last hearing was for me to go back to the architect. Get the architectural stamp, so now I did go back to the architect, okay? The issue between the architect and the homeowner, whatever, that's their issue that they have to resolve, okay? Um, but basically. He, I submitted the plans that were submitted to the board last time. To the homeowner, to the architect, to basically draw them up, and this is what he came back to, to us with. Okay, I actually kicked them back before submitting to the board and requested because he did not have this revision date. Place down here, um, on this, uh, on the, to request that he placed that, uh, revision date. To coincide, because the original date was from, in, there's a, a letter, I believe, from the. to coincide because the original date was from, in there's a letter, I believe, from the the board okaying the set of plans six dated 626, 2019.
Right. What Jim, what Jim is saying. I believe in Jim, I'm not trying to put, I'm just trying to simplify it. That this 626 date represents these drawings. You then have an updated date, which there's no change. There's no revisions. All we're working on for the minor mods are the elevations. Because
Correct.
If the, this is not represented on the other drawing that you got them to put a date on, which they didn't provide.
I agree. I agree with the board 100%. But at the same time, I can't be sitting there working or sitting over the architect's shoulder to say, okay, now you gotta go to page three, we'll say, and say, can you please update that also? As I was chasing them down to get this to the building department to be submitted on Friday.
No, I, I appreciate that you're playing catch up. I'm gonna let the other board members speak and tell us how they feel. And then, okay.
So what we would be approving would be whatever these are dated nine something showing, including the narrative that he submitted, showing exterior changes and that there are minor modification without getting into interior stuff or any of that.
What I, what I would suggest is we only approve sheet five.
Ah, that would be good.
So Jim, my question would be, if we only approve sheet five, but she, I don't know, whatever that was above two or three, isn't changed. In which controls, you can't really say sheet five is changed, but sheet three is not. We could say, I, I, well, my idea, but Jim, tell me from your experience, if this doesn't make sense, you could say, you know, sheet five with sheet, other sheets to be updated to conform to those changes. I don't know if that's even possible in your mind. But I think we need to do it that way, not say only sheet five is changed.
So Greg, to your, to your point, when you're getting a building permit or whatnot, the plans are really in residential stuff are really just a, I won't say it a suggestion, they're what, they're what's supposed to be built. But they're really, they're really looking for, do they meet code? Does it meet structural code? Does it, when, when Ben goes in to inspect, he's looking for how is it constructed? Not really, is it the window in the right spot? We're more.
Well, understood, but procedurally. We're more concerned about that than right now, these drawings that we could approve have windows in two different spots. So.
Which is why I think if we approve, if we find the amount that is being requested as a minor modification to be appropriate, I would only approve it on the sheets that show it along with the narrative. I would not include the others because they haven't been updated.
You just say that the elevations overrule the floor plan?
Yeah, on this particular case.
Yes. So I think then we need, yeah, so then I think we need to say that too and not, because I don't think you can say just five is changed. Then, well, you know, because we're always procedurally saying what is being built, what is being built right in front of us. If we approve this, no one knows really what's being built if we just approve it as is, say, only sheet five is changed.
The, the chain, the, the, the changes reflect changes in the elevation from what we originally approved. And this is the only sheet in a way that basically shows the changes in elevation. The rest of it basically is, you know, minor compared with what the rest of this, what the rest of the drawing show. So to me, it's, it's, this shows clearly now what the elevation changes are. And that's all it is. That's all. When we go back and look at the original drawings, basically, it was submitted to us. Then we know when we look at that, okay, so they changed this window for that window. They got rid of this one. It's clear. This is where I think, don't mix it up with all the rest of this stuff. Just keep it basically at sheet five on this particular date. And that's all we're concerned about is where do the changes happen?
Question for the board, would you like me to bring up the previous sheets?
No, you're just confused.
Yeah, you'll make it, you'll make it worse. Believe me, I've looked at them. I've got them both up on my computer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Paul, is there a reason you didn't update the floor plan? I mean, what's the contract they're going to go by? He's just gonna go by the.
I, I am. Well, you have a. Why didn't we, I am the contractor. To tell you the truth, I have no idea. I know there's a dispute between the owner and the architects.
I would think you want to do it just for your own, for your own purposes, because you'd want to.
Make me go away. To make me go away, but I guess he doesn't want to make me go away. I don't know. And not only that, but like I specified earlier, he submitted these to me and I just briefly looked at them on my, my, my phone. And I was, the first thing I know, I read out right in was on this line down here where it has the revisions, which was basically left completely wide open blank. So there was no revision date put down there. So I kicked them back. And if you notice, he only has, I believe, the revision on one sheet, which is the five. On sheet number five, he has revision down there with the date on it where it says elevation. But on all other sheets, he has no revisions at all. So maybe he basically was in a hurry, which I'm sorry.
That's appropriate because he didn't revise any of the other sheets.
No, but yeah, you should. I mean, you can't.
But, but you're, you're, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about, we'll say sheet number three, which the floor plan sheet or second floor plan, the, the window was not changed over. So that should have been revised also. Actually, he put.
Yeah, I'm talking as a builder myself. I don't build a house by the elevations. I build it by the floor plan. So, you know, you know yourself. You would be, you're not going to be building.
So you're trying to match floors, you're trying, you're trying to match, match existing floors. You're not trying to put up a tower here, you know?
Okay. Anybody else?
Otherwise seems minor to me if we are calling it a minor.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm fine.
We haven't talked about that part.
Everybody good for the moment?
Yeah.
I'm gonna open it up to the public. If anybody has a question or comment, raise your hand. Is anybody left in here? Okay, so seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
So I have a question to others. Do we generally feel that what has been represented and the changes that are represented qualify as a minor modification?
Yes.
I do. That's what I should, yeah.
I think they do. It's just, it's more a matter of just moving doors and windows or eliminating them and taking them out. I don't think there's a lot of, I mean, that's really it.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
There is, yeah, but it's all like, I don't know, it's in the same realm, I guess. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, adding a, it's changing style, changing size. I'm, I'm okay with it. I just think we often, I think unfortunately Paul got into somewhat of a bee's nest and is getting stung from us and from everybody else. So, you know, he's kind of, my understanding is he's the second contractor on this job too. So, you know, there, there's issues all the way around. So. I mean, I think what they're asking for is kind of minor, even though there's a lot of it. And I think it's between the narrative and the sheet five, it's pretty well explained now. So I'm okay with it if others are.
I think Chip, if, if it was not just windows, but it was a lot of other things, you know, I think then, you know, I would agree that it's not minor, but at this point, it's just a bunch of window changes, period, and location changes. So I'm.
Pretty minor location change.
Yeah, so I'm, as I said earlier, I think the whole, the whole point of this is just, how did the elevation change? They've shown up to us, they've told us where the windows are coming out, where they're increasing basically. So I'm all for this. I hate to see it go this way as far as the process, but hey, it is what it is now. And we just said, clear the decks on it.
Right. So given that kind of straw poll, I make a motion that we allow the minor modifications as presented to us on sheet five and the narrative of Phoenix Architects for the Sole Mine Residence at 1188 Main Street in Wakefield, as well as the narrative presented to us by the contract.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Chip, is this all of us that voted? Or is it just five? For this, for my.
It's five. It should, it probably should be the original five.
Okay. Let me see.
Be consistent.
Right.
I think they, you know, I think the former chair would have done it that way.
Okay.
Dave didn't know he was resigning.
Yeah, he already told me he's not coming home. So. I was trying to find the original decision.
Breaking, he's been drinking too many Mai Tais.
You have the file?
I do.
Chip, do you need to include in your motion of the date of that drawing? Did you mention the date since we had a discussion about the date?
I could certainly modify it to include the date of, do you remember the date, Joe?
The revision nine.
91521.
91521. Motion so revised. Thank you.
Yeah, do you know where I find the original? Voting members?
The last page of the decision. The decision has a couple letter on it. Really on top of the file.
Okay.
Only this new stuff should be on top of it.
All right, I have it. So it was Dave, Chip, Jim, me and Joe. So we'll just, let's put who seconded it? Tom? All right, so we'll throw you in there. So Tom.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's all set. So we'll get over. Do we, what do I do with this? A new? A new. That's what I'm looking for. To send to him. What's it called? Decision?
Yeah, I don't think it has to be a full fledged decision, just, you know, a blur.
I think we approved the minor motion.
Yeah.
But he probably has a form for that.
So.
Yeah, we'll get clocked in with the town clerk and then given to Ben. And then we need these updated plans to attach to the plans we have in the office.
All right, so that one's all set. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, boy.
Good luck, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so clerk and board comments. I don't have anything. Anybody else?
I have, I have a general question. Anybody curious where the homeowners were through all of this, not last one? Just curious.
Just wondering.
Just wondering.
What'd you say?
They're consulting with Dick.
We have man chair. I have another motion.
Sure.
That we accept the September 8 minutes as so professionally, gorgeously, perfectly written and presented.
Second.
Anybody can second it, jump in.
She just did.
I think Gail, I think Gail seconded it.
At this point.
Yeah. Okay, Chip.
Yes.
I can't talk. Tom.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
I now move that we adjourn and Amy did a great job.
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Chip?
I'm leaving.
Bye. Tom.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Have a good night.